Good evening, if we can stand for the pledge.
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everybody. Before we get started, I need a motion to add under a new item on the agenda, under number five, consent agenda, I need to add a letter C, which is a notice of retirement. Thank you. Do you have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Great, thank you, motion passes. We will go back, and the first item on the agenda is a glimpse exemplary people, and this evening we're recognizing our fire marshal, Bill Davenport, who is here this evening.
Mr. Davenport, if you'd join me over here, please.
Thank you for coming out tonight. So tonight, we have Bill Davenport, our fire chief, with us tonight. He has a wonderful working relationship with our district in every way. We're very, very fortunate to have him as part of our school community, as well as the entire community. He plays a really important role with the security within our schools. As one example, we have a health and security meeting coming up this Thursday, and one of the things that Bill has been doing is working with the state fire board to get us a little clarity about how to work some of our drills. It's become more complex these days with managing lockdown drills with fire drills, and how to make both of those things work together. So he's a very valuable part of our community, and I thank him, we all thank him, for the contribution that he makes, because our schools are a better place for what he does. So, thank you, Bill, very much.
Thank you. Just real quick, I'd like to thank the board and Dr. Zamri, of course. The schools, of course, are my main focus in town. They're the most populated buildings, of course, during the school year that we have in town, and they're my main focus. I know a lot of the administrators dread when they see me walking through the door in August for my annual inspection, but with the board's help, and of course, the staff in the central office, we've, there's been a cohesiveness that we've come together and made milestones, we really have. Thank you again, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, we're gonna probably just go right back over there.
We are.
Because our next item on the agenda is our teacher of the year, who is Jill Sevestro from Fawn Hollow, second grade, correct?
So, we had, last April, I believe it was, we had our teacher of the year committee meet, and that's comprised of all of our former teachers of the year, as well as the administrators in the district, and we received over 100 nominations this year, was a record turnout for the number of nominations we received. About 25 percent of our total teaching population received some kind of a nomination for becoming teacher of the year. From all those nominations, it was unanimous decision to choose Jill, and I want to share a couple of the comments from those nominations. From staff, they say that Jill embodies what we expect of a master teacher, she is always professional, courteous, and caring of students and staff alike. From students, they say, "I want her to know that she is very, is very kind and is always here when I need her. I love being in her class and sharing memories. I wish I could stay forever." I'm not sure if that's what we want, but that's. In this coming November, Jill will be recognized at the Bushnell by the Commissioner of Education as our teacher of the year, and we couldn't have a finer representation of the teachers in our district, so thank you, Jill, very much.
Thank you so much.
And we have a gift, too, which, I'll get this right yet with the presentation, please. So, on behalf of the Monroe Public Schools, we have this crystal apple. Jill Sevestro, teacher of the year, 2018.
Oh, sweet, thank you so much. It's such an honor to work for Monroe. This is a fabulous place, it's home, I love it, I love what I do, and I can't be just more honored to work here, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you guys could leave if you want, we're not offended. We will move on to the consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve? Thank you. Do you have a second? Thank you, Jerry. Do you want to discuss item C? We have a letter in our, the little packet that you have in front of you, third one in on our retirement. Would you like to address it?
I think it's fair to say that it is with deep regret that we've received a letter from Debbie Cavaci announcing that she would like to retire this year. We've tried to talk her out of it numerous times, but it's that time, and I know that she's gonna miss all of us, we're gonna miss her a lot, and her mark on this district will be an indelible one, and will be here for many, many years past her time here in this district.
And unfortunately, we do have to accept it, we've learned now from last year. You know, we don't have the option to say no, as much as I'd like to, because I've already texted Deb, because she could tell you early this morning with a "No!" And stuff, but, anybody have anything else? Well, you will be missed.
Very, very upsetting, you couldn't wait a couple more years.
Yeah, like, four. I know. When I had, when Ainsley, she said to me, when Ainsley started, "Don't worry, I will stay till Ainsley," and when I had Reagan, like, right after I have her, she came to the house, she goes, "I can't make that promise with her."
Was there a Chris Scott?
You were, so we'll call it, we've got through two and a third children, three with you, two and a third, because only two years. Four more was, it could've been four more.
We'll miss you very much.
Yeah.
Thanks, gentlemen.
It's really been a great experience, and I really thank you for your opportunity.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Reluctantly, do we have, all in, does anybody have anything else on this? And then, all in favor of the consent agenda? Thank you, motion passes. We will move on to our reports of our committees and liaisons, and we have up our Massey Board主席.
Hi. So, the quarter's already halfway through, and it's been a really great half-quarter. So, this, on October 17th, our seniors will be presenting early capstone, and I'm sure the presentations will be super interesting. Some that I know of are biomedical research at Yale University, and some are at the local police department, shadowing police officers. Recently, Ms. Fermenter here at Massey has implemented a word of the week, and it's actually a partnership between the Monroe Schools and the community, and this week's word of the week is sensit-tact, which is sensitivity in dealing with others or difficult situations. And you'll see this word at the library and other local establishments, and it really improves our vocabulary, and it's a, it's a great addition to the Monroe community. In the office, we have a bin for the donations to the Hurricane Florence. So, Riley Beek, a 2014 Massey graduate, and a marine in the area in North Carolina that has been really affected by the storm, has requested donations of gently used clothing or hygiene items to help these families that have been suffering from the storm, and the bin in the office is overfilling, so it's been very beneficial, so.
And also, this, this week, underclassmen pictures will take place on this Wednesday the 3rd, and this Thursday the 4th, here at Massey. Life touch order forms were sent home to students via the mail, and if students didn't receive one, then they can go to the main office to get an extra. Also, students will or have found out what day they're scheduled for by their English teachers. Also, today, sophomore class ring orders were sent home with the sophomore class, and earlier tonight, from 4:30 to 6:30, a Johnson representative was here to talk with parents and students about the rings and sizing issues, like, for ordering in the future. Also, we have a sports update this Saturday, most recently was a big day for Massey, as our football team won 48-8 against Notre Dame. Our field hockey team finally pulled off a win 4-0 to Laurelton Hall, and our boys soccer won 5-1 against Immaculate.
Great, thank you.
Great job, girls.
Thank you. Does anybody have any other reports tonight, Jerry? Do you have anything on policy?
When the policy committee met tonight, we had a quorum, which was great, and we have four policies that are gonna come before the board next meeting.
Great, thank you. Anybody else have anything? All right, we will move on to public participation. All right, hearing none, we will move on to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you, Donna. First of all, just like to share that Donna and I met with Chip DeMay, who is the new director of the CES RESC in our area, and we had a great conversation about a number of items, but the most important one was about having Monroe's membership on the board at CES, so Donna has agreed to be a member on that board, but the other thing that Chip had shared is that we were allowed to have an alternate. As you might recall, one of the challenges that we've had is their meeting times are at 3:00 in the afternoon, and we did make clear to Chip that altering those times would be beneficial, he heard that loud and clear. The other thing that he's looking at doing, too, is moving meeting locations to make it a little bit easier for boards across the CES area to come together. He really does want our input, and it is a good opportunity for us to have a voice at the table, so the main message we just wanted to share with everybody is Donna's willing to do it, but if we have an alternate, we'd make sure that we have a voice every meeting if Donna's not able to attend. So, just something to keep in mind if somebody's willing and interested.
Yes. And Chip, like, like Jack said, Chip is going to try to start changing some meetings around so that they are not, because I expressed to him that 3:00 on a Thursday afternoon is near impossible for anybody on at least our board to attend. You know, I told him we have a board where it's a lot of parents who have young children, or if they don't, then they work, and I was like, you know, and that's just a difficult time when the school is getting out to attend a meeting down at CES, so. He did hear it, and, you know, he said, "Unfortunately, though, that change is going to be slow in coming with the group," so.
So, if you are interested, if you could let Donna know, and then we can make that, we can put that together. Next item is October 1 enrollment, and that is the first couple pages of your packet, and then I also have a few slides, too, because we just put this data together today, given that it's October 1st. So, what we have for you on the first page is this slide that just gives you an overview of our current enrollment, grade by grade, at each school, as well as the K through 12 enrollment. That one probably isn't as meaningful as the next one, where it's the second page in your packet, and what this one shows you is, you might recall this one, we've had variations of this portion in the past, this upper section, and what we did here is the two most important rows are the ones with the white cells. So, the upper one of those two is the October 1 enrollment for last year, the 17-18 year, and then the lower row with white cells is this current October 1, today, and then beneath that is the difference, grade level by grade level. Green boxes mean that we've picked up students, red boxes means that we've lost students. And you can see, it's interesting, there's a trend here, we're not sure how significant it is, but the green boxes tend to exist more in the lower grades, whereas the reds up top. You know, part of that is that there is more school choices, students get to the high school level, so that could be one factor within that. And then, this has been updated, and if you recall, in the summer, this was a little flatter, this was a little bit of a higher number, and you might recall, too, one of the things I shared in the summer is that the summer numbers are always, they're not the most reliable, and the reason why the state insists in October 1 is by October 1, everything is pretty much solidified, as much as it's going to. You have transitions of families moving in, families moving out over the summer, and as a result, those numbers just aren't the most stable. So, we've always compared the October 1s, those used by the state, used by us for a year-to-year comparison. I think the one thing we can take away from this is there's a clear divergence in our enrollment trend from the demographic projections. The rate, the median rate for myelomic room showed that we would continue to lose at this rather significant rate, whereas rate of loss is much smaller. You can see that last year versus this year, we're down about 30 students in total. So, any questions on that overview? As I said, these just came in, literally, these graphs are about four hours old, so we're starting, just getting our brains around all of it at this point, too. Okay, if there's any other graphs you want for the future, just let me know, and we'll bring those out for a board meeting. Okay, next item that we have is insurance committee update. So, last week, we had a meeting with, our first meeting of the insurance committee study group, very good meeting, really well attended. Rob Fitzpatrick from Brown &amp; Brown made a presentation about the benefits within our current insurance plan, what all the details are in terms of the kind of benefits that are within that plan, and then compared it to the state partnership 2.0, which is the other plan that we're studying and considering, and we really wanted to focus this meeting purely on planned benefits. We tried to keep it right there. I think we're mostly successful, not completely, and our next meeting will be focused on the finances related to both, both plans, but we're off to a good start. Jerry was there, and Donna were there, and I think we had some very good discussions and some good learning that occurred, and those are really our primary goals, so we look forward to working with everybody on that important initiative. Our next meeting is the end of October.
October 25th.
October 25th. And our next item is the 2018 CAPE, CAPE caps conference, and that one is coming up, it is on November 16th at the Mystic Marriott. Currently, Donna, Joel, and I are scheduled, Jerry, are you in?
Yeah.
Great. All right. I didn't even get to it, and you're already in, this is great.
She already made sure she was.
Excellent. Good team effort. All right, so we're, we just doubled our board members, so if, if there are others that are willing and interested, we'd love to have as many as possible. I know Jerry and Donna went last year also, and would you agree, I mean, there were some very good sessions.
Yes, so just to, so just to give you a little idea, this conference is held once a year by CAPE and CAPS, they do it in conjunction with each other. The workshops are very informative, we only go up on the Friday, there's a Saturday session, we don't go to that, but there is some very interesting breakouts with different seminars that you can attend, that we, you sign up for, and if you go onto the website, you can see the different seminars that you can choose from, and it's, and it's also a good way to meet other board members from, and other superintendents from our, all across Connecticut. You kind of bounce different ideas and discussions off them on how they do things, or, and how we don't want to do things, and it is a really great day if anybody can come. Right, Jerry, we had a-
It was a lot of fun.
It was very informative, great sessions, I mean, we did learn a lot last year, like, one of the sessions I went to was about consolidation between the town and the board, and, you know, trying to save money different ways, but there's, but there's lots of different seminars to choose from. I think I'm doing one of the legislative ones, legislative, you know, initiatives coming out of Hartford this year, so. And they have different law firms that work in Connecticut, special education people, so like, all experts are there that are running these, these panels, so it's a lot of question and answer, it's a lot of information on what's going on in the state for, you know, board members to, to get an idea of what's happening.
So, if you are-
Alan.
I'm sorry.
What do you need to know, Brian?
Really, you know, I think if we can know in the next couple of weeks, it'll be fine.
Is there, I thought there was like a date that it, it had to be registered by-
There was a pre-registration discount, we're past that, so really, at this point-
Okay.
You know, if we knew in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, but if you are interested, if you email Donna or myself-
Yes.
All right, we'll get you registered.
Right, and if you hit the link on Margaret's agenda, it takes you right to the website, and you can kind of see all the information on it, and all the different workshops, and the agendas and stuff like that. It does include, the Friday does include breakfast, lunch, are we staying for dinner? Are we bailing on dinner again?
We'll see what's on the menu.
Okay. Last year, we bailed on dinner, but we did stay for the breakfast and lunch, but, okay, so if you click on that, it'll bring you right to the page, and you can see the workshops.
And then, one last item that I didn't have time to put on the agenda is we met with the NEASC committee again today, and we've met with Bethel High School and Fairfield Ward High School so far, they're one of the, there's only been three high schools in the state that have used the new accreditation process for NEASC, which is the New England Association of Secondary Schools, colleges, thank you, schools and colleges, and they're the accrediting agency for high schools in the Northeast, so the, they've created a new process, we had good meetings with both Bethel and Fairfield, highly informative. We're still getting our brains around the new process, even those schools that are using it are still trying to understand it, even though when we met with Fairfield last week, they're about to go through their accreditation this week. So, schools really, to this point, haven't gone through the actual accreditation itself, so everybody's trying to understand it, we're getting our brains around it, the committee's done great work. I want to thank Jake Greenwood, and Joe, and Bonnie Waring, and Nancy Zakowski, they've all done a lot of work to date to make sure that this is a successful process. The reason why I'm sharing this with the board is one of the things we're looking at is the amount of time we might need. In the last accreditation, which was the old-style review process, it was 10 half-days. We don't see needing that kind of time, that's why we haven't come to the board to talk about that, but we are not certain how much time we're gonna need to put all this together. So, what will happen is on our November professional development day, most of that day will be dedicated to the NEASC process at the high school, and then after that day, at the end of it, we're going to meet together, the NEASC team, myself and Joe, and we're gonna see where we are and try to project what kind of time we're going to need. At that point, in December, I might be coming to the board and asking for your consent to possibly have some half-day time if we need it, but again, we don't want to go down that road unless the need is there, so we're trying to gauge that as best we can with the new process. So, really, I just want to keep you informed about where we are and what we're thinking about doing moving forward. All right, any questions?
All right. All right, so we're moving on to presentations, and we have a few presentations tonight, and they're all sports-related, so Joe and John, and, I'm sorry, we have one of our students here who is also gonna come up to talk about item C on presentations, name, I'm sorry?
Mike.
Mike, thank you.
I can join us, yeah, in a minute.
Yeah.
If I can start some, I can do a little bit.
So, a couple of weeks ago, at the, at the Board of Education meeting, there were some questions about athletics, so we thought it'd probably be a good idea for us to address some of the questions that came up, and then also, kind of give an update of things that have been, that are going on, some kind of exciting stuff, and Michael's gonna join us in a little bit, because he has a project that he started to try to get dugouts for both the baseball and softball team funded, and he's done some work around that, it's actually become part of his capstone project. The first piece, though, is the National Federation of High Schools Network. A couple of years ago, as, as principal, we had a representative from the National Federation of High Schools come to the, come to our league meeting of the SWC, and just to kind of understand, I put this up here, and if you work from the bottom to the top, just so you kind of understand what the National Federation of High Schools is, the NFHS, again, working from the bottom, Massey High School is in the Southwest Conference, that's our conference, that has other towns like, you know, Easton Redding, Joel Barlow, Stratford, Banel, that's our conference here. There's other conferences in the state, the FCAC, the SEC, the CCC, we're part of the SWC. Our state governing body is the Connecticut Interscholastic Athletic Conference, that's the CIAC, okay, that includes all the public and pro field schools in Connecticut. The broad national governing body is the National Federation of High Schools, and a few years back, we had a representative from the National Federation of High Schools come to talk to us about joining the National Federation of High School Sports Network, which is a streaming program where they can, where they work with this organization called Play On Sports, where they can stream our games. I'll let John talk a little bit more about the actual streaming and kind of nuts and bolts of the process and the camera, and you're gonna see, we could actually, if you guys really want, if you want to be really fun right now, we could turn on the field hockey game that's going on right now down at the field.
I was just watching.
Oh, it's just ended?
Yeah, it just ended.
But we're gonna show you a little bit of a clip from the thing, because it's some really, there's some really cool technology involved, and some great opportunities for our families and for our student athletes, and for students interested in video production.
All right. As, as Joe said, it, this, the network, we've gone online with the network, beginning this year, beginning in September, our first, our first game down on the stadium field, where we could stream nationally and locally all of our games that are on Benedict Stadium Field, including the one that was being played tonight, our field hockey game against Immaculate, I was watching it as, as the game was close down the stretch there. As, Joe and I were together when we first heard of this, and ever since then, it was, it would be one of my goal, it was one of my goals as athletic director, to get this system for our student athletes in our community, and last year, in discussions with them, we were able to have a camera installed in our stadium system, in our stadium this past summer. During the course of my discussion, I will, I'll show pictures of the camera and talk about some other things that you could see, it's really neat technology. Some of the benefits of having this, this technology and this ability to stream locally and nationally, obviously, is it allows our parents, our relatives, friends, to be able to see their, you know, either their children or their family members participate in all the sporting events during the course of the year. And it doesn't have to be just our varsity game, it's freshman and JV as well. This past weekend, we were able to stream a 9:00 AM freshman boys soccer game, followed by a varsity field hockey game, then followed by a JV field hockey game, and, and it really, do you, it's, it's allowed me as well, as an athletic director, even if I'm not there, to see our games, which has been, which is an extra benefit. So, even if I'm at an away game, I could see it here, and if other schools, you'll see in a second, have this technology as well, I could be at our, our field watching our girls soccer game, and while I'm also on my phone, watch our boys soccer game at another venue at the same time. This happened last year when we were playing Brookfield, and I was watching our girls play here, and I was able to watch our boys play in the Brookfield Gymnasium, you'll see in a couple of seconds, all the schools in our league that have this technology. One of the big items that, selling points of this network is it does allow our students who are interested in media career to pursue some opportunities. One of the, the interesting, one of the really exciting things is if there is an interest, if there is an interest in a student in being a broadcaster, he or she could plug in to the system and do play-by-play or color analysis during the course of the game. Obviously, before they do that, we'll do some working with the, our video production department and go through and do some demo tapes before they go live nationally, but also provides them an opportunity, not, also get to practice, but have tapes there, if that's something that they want to do. Speaking about tapes, it allows for college exposure for student athletes. A lot of colleges, obviously, are on the NFHS network, and they're able to follow certain teams and, and take a look.
It's very, it's very difficult, a lot of people get frustrated, "How come the colleges aren't coming to see my kids play?" Well, they gotta realize that, you know, during football season, it's also the colleges' football season, so they can't see it, so this is a great, this provides a great vehicle for our kids to get some additional exposure that they didn't get.
And also, right along with that, is there are different timings, times during the season where coaches could speak with college athletes, depending upon the specific sport. You know, field hockey can be different than football, it's different than baseball, it's different than basketball, so it allows them that opportunity as well. There's a future revenue stream for the athletic department in terms of possible advertisement for local businesses, as well as revenue stream based upon subscriptions to the NFHS network, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a second. And I'll talk a little bit about that in a second. Opportunity for youth sport coverage. It just doesn't, it doesn't just go for Massey High School athletics. There is an ability of, say, our youth soccer, youth lacrosse, youth football. If they give me a time when they are down on the field and it's going to be a game, I could put it on. We haven't done that as of yet, but we will be doing that down the line. So those parents of the youth sports, your grandparents who are not able to get down to the field, will be able to see our youth programs. As long as it's on the stadium field, we could televise it and we could stream it. So that's another exciting for the whole, very exciting for the community as a whole. We did say something about subscriptions. I subscribe to it myself. So what you would do if you, and you'll see a little bit later on, if it's based upon, you know, you have to follow the specific school. So you could go to follow Massey and you click, I want to subscribe, it'll give you different programs that you could subscribe to. You know, for a month, it's nine ninety-nine. If you just want a season, it's over four months, it would be like forty dollars for four-month period, which you could, which you could see. For a year period, for three hundred and sixty days, it's a seventy-dollar annual pass. Which not only allows you to watch the games live, but also pass games. So it just doesn't, you know, the live game, it's over, you can't see anymore. You could see pass games. I could go back and see games from two or three weeks ago, three weeks ago on that field. I also could see games that Massey participated in last year at a different venue that had this technology. So that's a really neat part of the whole system. Some of the other schools that have this technology, the camera's called a Pixelot camera, which we'll show in a moment. The ones on the left are the schools in our league. You know, Weston just came live on one of their fields. They have it both inside and out. Brookfield has it both inside and out. I was able to, as I said earlier, I was able to see our basketball game there last winter. And Banel just went live as well on both venues. Going live in our gym is something, is a goal of mine as well and something that we hope to do in the future. So allow our volleyball team, both boys and girls, our wrestling team and both our girls and boys basketball programs. To be filmed live in the gym as well. Other area schools, you have Buchanan, Shelton just went live on both, the gym and the stadium. They had it in the gym and now it's back in the stadium. Trouble only has it in the gym right now, but I'm sure they're going to, like us, they're going to want to get two venues on as well. And these, these lists are only going to increase as time go by. I'm assuming with the next two or three years, everybody in the SWC will have at least one Pixelot camera on their campus. Whether it's in the gym or on the turf or their outside stadium is, excuse me, is up to them. But yeah, these will definitely increase as we, as the years progress. That is the Pixelot camera and that is where it is located. The red is our press box down on top of the hill at our stadium field. I gave you two pictures. One, the close-up picture. You see there's two lenses up top and they will follow the action. It is not manned. It is technology that you. The Play On Sports is out of Atlanta and this camera, it just runs automatically. It follows the, follows the movement. Depending upon the sport. When I log in or when I create, tonight's game was a makeup game. So I put that on this morning to make sure it was on live tonight and I had to choose the sport. Because I'm assuming, I'm not, I couldn't explain the technology that's going on there. But, you know, and the little things that they have told me, you know, picking the sport plays a little bit of a role in that. So I had to pick field hockey so the camera could, with its technology, is a better feel of what's going on. And you see the picture right, I wanted to add that to show how, it's not that big. It's not that big. The customer service is unbelievable. The first night we had that was at our, the first, it was opening night on our, on stadium field. It was our football game against Brookfield. I'm standing on the sideline in the first quarter and all of a sudden I get a text from Atlanta. That's where Play On Sports is. And like, are you at the game? Like, yeah, I'm at the game. They're, okay, they said, okay, you got, go up to the press box. And one of the, they said, open up the back, because inside the press box is a processor, is a computer rather. Which takes the feed from the camera and goes hardwired into our wifi and all the way down to Atlanta. So they maybe take off the back panel of the computer and they said, take a picture. And I said, okay, we got to move that wire and wait till it goes yellow on you and boom, okay, you're, you're all set. That easy. So it is, the customer service is unbelievable. We had some discussions, Jack, Joe and myself and Donna, when we talked about this is what type of technology is it? So, and I thought you would say some, some sort of may possibly artificial intelligence. So it is really cool. We have the link right there where I think I have it linked to a field hockey, that was actually tonight's game. You could just go right onto there right now or go further down. Go to Massey High School. And right where, okay, so if we go down further, you can see the different games. So if we go to girls soccer, JV girls soccer versus Banel, that's for tomorrow, I'm sorry. Click on that. Go further down. Oh, go down a little bit. I'm sorry, go to the left. I'm sorry, and scroll down. All right, so if you go to. Go to, go to recently viewed. Right there, right there, click on that. And so if you go see girls soccer from Bethel versus Massey, these are the games that I've viewed and I've watched. That is the warmups of our game and click right there.
Yeah, both teams are warming up right now, so we'll just get into the game.
And what is the, if you see up on the left, that, our scoreboard was there well prior to us. Getting this Pixelot camera system and going live on the NFHS Network. There's one cable that goes in from the computer panel into the back of the scoreboard controller. And it automatically feeds, so we have the score and the time on the upper left-hand corner. If there is, where's the pointer? We talked, we had spoken early about getting some advertising. There's a couple of panels here that say a restaurant or a local store wanted to put a small advertisement. That's where it would go. We also have the capability to put our logo there. I've chosen not to do that because I want more of the screen there. But down the line, as we become more adept at using and reaping all the benefits of this network. We'll probably have some advertisement right there. As I said, that would be local in nature. But if you see here, this camera is moving, following the movement of the players and the ball is quite amazing. And you get this on your, your, your big screen television at home, it's, or on your phone, it's, it's, it's pretty neat. And I have to tell you, it's also allowed me, especially a couple of times on Saturdays or night games where I'm watching this. It's allowed me a couple of times to call into our site director if I see something out of place or. So it's allowed me, if I'm not there, to give a visual of what's going on. Dr. Greenwood has seen this as well. Joe and Jack were so, so were able to see things. So it, it makes me feel a lot more comfortable if I'm not there, so I could see the game, what's going on. So that's an added benefit that really I didn't realize until I was, I was watching it. Do you have any questions on that or, as I said, there, they are, it is a subscription-based service. And I have been able to, it's funny, they've, they've allowed me, I could take a look and see how many people are watching each sport. You know, how many people have watched live, how many people have watched on video go, on demand. So it's, it's, it is amazing. It really is. I'm very happy for our student athletes.
So any questions on that system at all from the board?
No, very nice. Very nice.
As I said, hopefully I could report back at some point or just, or Dr. Zamri or Skobbs will be able to report back that. We have one in the gym at some point in time. So that's the next step.
The cost of the district, is it, or is it all funded through the subscriptions?
Right now, we don't have, we don't have an obligation. It doesn't get enough use. The company has the ability to take it away. Because it's the subscriptions that are funding the, the cost. So no, no BOE funds.
And the second one that John's talking about, trying to work with Booster Club to purchase that. So again, no.
You mentioned a possible revenue stream. Like, what would you, what would you do with that money?
I'm sorry?
Where would the money go?
In terms of what it would purchase or where will it go? We'll just have it set up an account where we could, we could, we could probably go into a fund where I'll talk with Gabby what we want to do with it or how we want to set up the fund. That, that revenue stream has not come in yet. So that's something we'll discuss as a team to see where we want to go and put that money.
And it does relate to the next topic too. There was a question at the last board meeting about pay-for-play. So one of the things we wanted to share with you tonight is just an update on that. This has been part of the budget presentations in the past, but that was quite a while ago. So Joe and John are going to give you an overview of how those finances work within athletics.
All right, the revenue from the athletic budget, just to, to review again, and as I said, I'll mention this again in the room we have. Our, our budget presentation, we have, I think everything's there, three streams of revenue. Obviously, the athletic surcharge, which we have a question about tonight. Gate receipts, they come from boys and girls basketball and football. And the third would be the Board of Ed contribution. So those three components comprise our overall funding for athletics. The athletic surcharge obviously is a projection based on possible, how many athletes will be participating in our sports. And how many would, would take advantage of free and reduced lunch or meet the family cap. Gate receipts, obviously, you know, they go up and down on how well we're doing. Last year, they went up an awful lot for football. I think I made a short one. So those, those do rise and fall. So it's sort of, what I do for both of those is I usually take three-year averages. If I think I need to go a little bit further, I may. But usually in general, it's a three-year average for athletic participants, which go in the overall formula. For how I determine my projection for surcharges. And I also do a three, usually a three-year, a three-year average for gate receipts. And then I usually round up or round down for my gate receipts, basically, you know, estimating how well, how well I think we're going to do in the following year. And then Board of Ed contribution, be a little bit of a slide still, based upon how much of those revenue streams we get. Right, if, up on the board, you'll see the surcharge collection slash projection. Let me actually say slash projection. If you see the asterisks, that's where things are projected and that's from this year. If you look at surcharge collection from two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, usually, over the last ten years. I've projected anywhere from like one ninety-two to one ninety-six, one ninety-seven. And it's usually pretty close, maybe two to three thousand either way. It just so happens, the last couple of years, we had some outliers. Two hundred, two thousand for two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, we had a huge increase on our track program and a few sports. So we saw that jump. And last year, we saw a corresponding decrease in, in certain sports. So that, there you'll see a little bit of a decrease. I am projecting that's going to go back up into around the hundred and ninety-nine thousand range this year. With respect to the surcharges. So I said, usually, on the projections that you'll see in my budget, it's, you know, usually pretty close, like maybe. Two to three or four thousand either way below or above. You'll see the total athletic expenditures. This year for eighteen nineteen, the projection was six hundred and thirty-five thousand. In two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, my projection was lower than that. That six forty-six is a product of the turf. And why that bumped up is we had to gain additional equipment from, for the field. In terms of goals, track equipment and field hockey goals and what have you. So that number boosted up from my projection from, from where that was. Last year, we were almost pretty close. I think, I figured exactly what I projected, but around six hundred twenty, we went back down to six hundred twenty-six thousand. And then I said, the Board of Ed obligation, that's after gate receipts. So, you know, the four twenty-five and the two oh-two don't add up to six forty-six. That, the, the difference is the gate receipts that you get from baseball, I'm sorry, baseball, I'm sorry, basketball and football. Okay, and the contribution went down from sixteen seventeen to eighteen, seventeen eighteen. They said that was a lot of that product, was a product of expenditures due to the additional, due to additional equipment needed for the turf field. As I said, like, you know, say for example, javelins. We needed to get rubber tipped javelins as we were thrown on the turf and not the grass. So that was a pretty, a solid expenditure that we had to purchase. Our next screen is, I give you a sort of a, two things. One, you know, from this budget, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. And you'll see it for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget when I present it. I, I give a cost per participant, an estimated cost per participant. And this number may vary from year to year based upon if there's a dramatic uptick or downturn. In the amount of people, amount of student athletes participating or just a budget, in terms of budgetary needs for. An individual sport. The cost per participant, actual for cheerleading will go up this year. Why? Because we got cheerleading mats. If I have to buy a wrestling mat, that's around nine thousand dollars. The cost per participant for wrestling will go up that particular year, especially if all of a sudden you see, you know, a drop of seven or eight wrestlers. You know, you look up front, this is your boys soccer and girls across country I did for the fall. Oh, I did three for the fall. And then I did girls and boys swimming. And I think that, I'm sorry, that is girls, I think that's girls' basketball. That's girls' basketball, I apologize. It's not girls' swimming, that's girls' basketball. Yeah, right there. I'd say I did two for the fall, two for the winter and then two for the spring. And the girls' swimming is around the same as boys. That, I've upticked the, the amount we spend on equipment. Because all that is basically for pool, whether it's timing pads, timing systems, touch pads rather, and the timing systems. Clocks for, for, for lap clocks, all those type of things. Just to, you know, the top of the maintenance of the pool, I've added over the course of the last couple of years. So that will give you an estimate and you'll see that for each sport. And I provided one, I hope everyone has a copy and you'll see that for each sport. Historical look down below, you'll see how we haven't really gone anywhere with our surcharge since two thousand eleven. It's been two fifty. The two ninety slash two forty-five that you see, the difference is we had years past officials versus non-official sports. So take for example, basketball would be two ninety, track would have been two forty-five back in those years. Then we went really high in two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, three ninety and three forty-five. We, we dropped down in participation that year, as you could probably imagine by the, the large increase. And then that, from there on, we went back down to two fifty. We sort of kept it as, as an equal rate. To make sure that every student athlete, depending upon what they sport, they wanted to participate in, had an equal chance to do so. And, you know, we weren't, they weren't, we didn't want them to choose sport based upon which one is more expensive, which is less expensive, we did not do that. So we kept it across the board at two fifty for all sports. Just to think a little bit more fair and, you know, as I said, you haven't seen, during that year when we had the three ninety and three forty-five. Can tell you how many student athletes came in and had a conversation with me. Like, I think I'm going to work. I'm not going to do this. Because of the, the increase. And, you know, those conversations went a long way. Two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, and the conversations I had with those students of making an even playing field at two fifty. Any questions on any of this?
So the next piece we have is about a proposed project. We've had a number of volunteers working on this. It's not formalized yet, so what we wanted to do is we wanted to get this out in front of the board for your consideration and review. It's about creating new dugouts for softball and for baseball. And we've got, not only do we have both John and Joe here, but we also have a student presenter who's doing this for his capstone. So we're very proud to see that work out here in the public. Thanks very much, Mike, for coming out to, to share this work that you've done so far.
Thank you for having me.
So this is Mike, he's getting, this is Michael Morella, he's going to get a two for, because you have capstone in what, next week or two weeks?
Yeah, I'm actually doing the normal presentation.
Oh, you're doing the normal, oh, you're getting a, you're getting a real big.
Oh, you're doing the normal, oh, so you're getting a, you're getting a real big, uh, head start on it.
Good drive, Ron.
Um, so as mentioned, my name is Michael Morella. I am currently the senior captain for the Massey baseball team for twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, and for my capstone project, I am trying to raise money for new softball and baseball dugouts. And to be completely honest with you, the capstone project was not so easy for me. I personally had no idea what I was gonna do in the beginning. I really didn't know where I was going, what my interests were, and I got very fortunate when this came around, this project, and I saw something that could benefit the community and benefit players, alumni and families and really bring them together for something that would benefit years to come of athletes that would, you know, uh, be playing on that field. So I have a quote here to start off, it's, "The dugout where new friendships are formed, hardships are overcome, laughter is shared, encouragement is given and memories of a lifetime are made." And as a player on Massey baseball for the last four years, I can tell you that quote really does mean a lot and as a freshman coming in and looking up to the seniors, um, and just seeing, get, trying to get encouragement from them and seeing how they, their body language on the field, off the field, how they go about themselves and looking for them to, you know, tell me what to do and really help me out. And now being a senior now, what it means to really go about what you're doing and do it the right way. And it's whether it's encouragement from coach, encouragement, encouragement from other players, these dugouts really mean a lot cause it's real, where everything takes place, from pep talks to whether you're having a good day or a bad day, these dugouts are home for us and they really do mean a lot, cause I can tell you, um, the past three years on senior night, I've looked at, uh, the seniors that I've looked up to and I've seen tears fall from their eyes every senior night and unfortunately, that's probably gonna be me this year. But, uh, these dugouts definitely do mean a lot to us and it's, it'd be nice to have a home for both baseball and softball. So our objective, as mentioned, is to raise funds to build new dugouts for baseball and softball fields. We're doing this because in two thousand three is one of the baseball dugouts and they were built by Coach Franco entirely out of wood and now being, going to be over fifteen years old, they're pretty worn down, they're starting to squinter and deteriorate, so it'd be nice to have a more permanent structure for, um, more generations to come. And then for softball, as it stands now, there is a chain link fence and just a, a metal bench, which unfortunately, if it were poor, it would, these girls would get drenched, which is, isn't good. And then, of course, for safety precautions, if a foul ball were to go over the fence, it would not end up well. So we're looking to replace the baseball dugouts with a concrete structure and give the softball dugouts a more permanent roof. And the strategy to accomplish this is to develop fundraisers to encourage players, families, alumni and businesses to support the project and help reach our goal. The current fundraiser we have in place is a four by eight dugout brick, an eight by eight dugout brick and eight by eight dugout brick with the logo. And as you see on the bottom right there are the dugout bricks and they will be in the shape of the M on the back of the baseball dugouts, which will be the concrete structure. The logo bricks, um, will be like, on the bottom right, there's Dix and Jensen, if they're interested in doing that to raise awareness for their companies, they could have something like that. And the four by eight and the eight by eight without the logo are more for the players and alumni, families, anyone that wants to get involved in helping this project and the community. They would have a piece that could stand for generations to come and that they can have their names, um, inscription, maybe a quote, like for me, I'd probably do, Mike Morella, twenty nineteen captain, go Massey, go Panthers, something like that, just something that would stand for a while with the dugouts. And then for our businesses, we have two sponsorship options, which are a two-year banner on either the baseball or the softball field or a two-year banner for both softball or the baseball field. And if they're interested, they could do that sponsorship, which would be held on the outfield fence for anyone at the event to see. And then, of course, we're accepting donations of any amount and we're having a banner go on the outfield fence for anything above fifty dollar donation, we're having a thank you banner taking place on both fields. So far, the ma- marketing campaign has been pretty significant. We've had an online website made for all of these sponsorships and dugout bricks that have been purchased. We've had an email campaign that has gone to major organizations and local businesses. One of the cool things about the email campaign is we've reached out to major organizations such as the Yankees, Mets and the Yard Goats, and actually the Yankees got back to us the other day and they, uh, confirmed that they got the email and that they're gonna look into it and see if they wanna support the project, which I thought was very cool, carrying from the Yankees, I am a very big Yankee fan, so it was pretty cool. And we also had a major social media campaign. We posted on both, uh, baseball and softball Instagram pages as well as the Facebook Monroe Parents, Facebook for Monroe softball and Monroe baseball, and we got a pretty good output on those as a lot of people seemed to get involved from that. Um, print media campaign, we were actually featured in the Monroe Courier. There was a whole article on basically what we're trying to accomplish, who's involved, um, and just the idea and involvement of this, which was very cool and got also got, um, a lot of people to look at and get more involved with this. And then a door-to-door business campaign is also, that's been taking place, me, myself and a few others, I've gone to, um, around forty local businesses pitching this campaign to them, handing them the flyers with the, um, fundraiser, the dugout brick, seeing if they're interested, trying to get them involved to help something for the community and these players. Um, so far, all funds raised have gone to Ms. Welch, the Massey bookkeeper, so she's managing all the funds. I personally have no control over that and she has a Google spreadsheet full of details. And where we are now, we have raised six thousand ninety-five dollars and most of that is taking place from the four by eight and the eight by eight bricks as well as the one to two year banners from businesses. Options to consider right now, we're trying to reduce the cost of the project as it's gone up to fifty thousand dollars, which is going to be very hard for us to achieve. We're looking for material and labor donations to help bring down the cost and make it more affordable and practical. We also have timing and weather concerns. The fall is no longer an option due to us being, um, nowhere near the money to build the dugouts. And now the winter and early spring is also a weather concern because if we cannot, um, raise funds in times, we're not be able to produce the dugouts due to, especially with the winters we've had and they've gone late, we wouldn't be able to have sufficient grounds to put them on. Also, the way it looks, we're going to need a transition person for a multi-year project to take the funds and continue this project to hopefully better the athletes of the future. And our next steps to consider are a project no-go or go decision, and we're hoping to do this by December fifteenth. The first step would be to see if anyone is, can get involved with the material and labor donations to see what the price can get down to and to see where we are with funds at the December fifteenth mark. And if we believe we're at a sufficient spot enough to continue the project, we'd like to do that and make it a multi-year project. But if unfortunately, we don't reach, um, whatever point we decided to put it at, then we're gonna have to return the funds and that Ms. Welch has. So as we stand right now, we're trying to increase player and parent involvement. We're meeting with coaches, I'm talking to both current players and alumni. We're trying to revisit local businesses and communicate and extend to families to try to get them involved. And we're also thinking about having a fundraiser table at the Massey football homecoming game and we'll be handing out the flyers to get more people involved, to see what we're doing, to understand, um, what we're trying to do and help out many people. And then we're also trying to develop additional fundraisers such as Monroe baseball and softball fall picnic or a coed slow pitch softball game and wiffle ball game. And this will be taking place at Wolf Park and we'll be trying to get alumni, current players and even Little League to all have a games going on at the, the fields at Wolf Park and hopefully get some parents in the pavilion to maybe grill a little bit and just have a good time and raise awareness for this project. And that's pretty much where we stand right now and that's about it. Thank you guys for your time.
Thanks, Mike. Thank you, good luck.
Thanks.
So any questions for the group at all on this project? It's, uh, completely from the ground up, it's, forgive the pun, it is grassroots and, uh, you know, a lot of people working together right now. Gabby's been working with the town on approvals for building and planning and zoning and that part of it too. Um, but we want to keep informed about this work, um, given that, you know, would be structures being installed at the schools. Mike, great, great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was a awesome presentation, especially Mike, good drive. Very good. I think his capstone should be appreciated.
Yeah, I think so.
You could do this, you could do this.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, we will move on to old business, which we have none unless somebody has anything. All right, we have no new business. Um, does anybody have any questions or anything before we move to adjournment? All right, I have a motion to adjourn. Second, thank you Christine. Any discussion? All in favor? Great, thank you much, Cassis. Good evening, everybody. Thank you.